I am going to call the organizational meeting to order. So the first thing is we are going to do the swearing of the new Alders and reappointed council members.
I have you come just a little bit closer to the microphone so we can hear you.
Ooh, it could be a barbershop quartet.
Okay.
You wouldn't want that.
If you want to clear the room.
Okay, everybody see everybody okay? Okay, all right, all right, welcome, congratulations. I'm going to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Jim Wheeler.
Who have been appointed, who have been elected to the office of Alder Person.
Who has been elected to the office of Alder Person.
In the city of Pittsburgh, Dane County, Wisconsin.
In the city of Pittsburgh, Dane County, Wisconsin.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
Want to take some pictures? Do you want to do some pictures? Do you want any pictures? Do you want to do any pictures? Okay, great.
After?
Yeah. After we did English, we do in Spanish. Okay. Good evening.
What even?
I'm going to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I'm Julia Ratafratta.
Who have been elected to the office of Mayor.
Who has been elected to the office of Mayor.
In the city of Pittsburgh, Dane County, Wisconsin.
In the city of Pittsburgh, Dane County, Wisconsin.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will, uh...
Support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations to you. (APPLAUSE).
So I'm going to do it now in Spanish, okay? And Joe is going to say it and I'm going to repeat.
Pardon my third-generation Spanish here. Yo, Julia Ratafratta.
Yo, Julia Ratafratta.
Que ha sido elegida para el cargo de alcaldesa en la ciudad de Pittsburgh.
Que ha sido elegida para el cargo de alcaldesa en la ciudad de Pittsburgh.
Condado de Dane, Wisconsin.
Condado de Dane, Wisconsin.
Pero aún no han entrado en mis deberes.
Pero aún no han entrado en mis deberes.
Juro que apoyaré la Constitución de los Estados Unidos y la Constitución del Estado de Wisconsin.
Juro que apoyaré la Constitución de los Estados Unidos y la Constitución del Estado de Wisconsin.
Y desempeñaré fielmente los deberes de dicho cargo lo mejor que puedo.
Y desempeñaré fielmente los deberes de dicho cargo lo mejor que puedo. (APPLAUSE). Okay, so next in the agenda is a roll call. Tracy? Oh, sorry, we need to do the page of the legions. Please stand up.
(COUNCIL CHAMBERING AND APPLAUSE).
So now we do the roll call.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassmann.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, I will welcome the new council member and do some opening remarks, okay? So, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here today. And I want to congratulate the new Alders, Bill Jetzer, and the new re-elected Alder, Dave, Jim, and Jay. Today is a very emotional and important day in my life. Twenty-nine years ago, when I arrived to this part of the world, I never imagined that one day I will be here preceding over this meeting as the newly elected Mayor of Pittsburgh. This city that I call home, this city where I raised my kids and made incredible friends, this city that I accepted me and elected me, my whole self, to be your mayor. Those who know me well, they know that I am deeply proud of our city, that I took my role as an Alder for eight years very seriously, and I enjoy serving in different committees, commissions, and representing my 8,000 constituents. I intend to be an active mayor, not too much, okay? Curious, inclusive, practical, pragmatic, I intend to collaborate with everyone on this council: city staff, community leaders, business leaders, and neighbors. I hope and I believe that my professional, cultural, and life experience will guide me to be an effective mayor. The election is over, and now is time for this council to look forward and work together for Pittsburgh residents. Each one of us has different views, opinions, and perspective, and that is okay. Diversity of opinions and ideas is the foundation for important discussion and well-informed decision-making process. It is okay to disagree, but we should do it with respect and kindness, and with the best interest of our constituents in mind. When we are unable to have productive discussion and work together on the tough issue that we are going to face, our city services, staff, and residents are the ones that will suffer. I envision a future for Pittsburgh that is equitable and inclusive, where all neighbors have safe places to live, work, and play. I want to elevate Pittsburgh to be one of the most desirable suburban cities in Dane County. To do this, I will foster safe and healthy neighborhoods, invest in transportation, and support affordable and workforce housing options. I will work to attract new businesses and support existing businesses and bring jobs and boost in the local economy. I will center equity as we make quality-of-life improvement and city decisions. Historically, certain Pittsburgh neighborhoods have been underserved, which is why I advocated for the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, Grand Program, and as a mayor, I will expand the scope of that initiative. The city government has taken a step to be transparent, but as a mayor, I will prioritize community engagement and proactive outreach. We must make it possible for all residents to participate in community decisions, no matter their economic status or preferred language. We can build a prosperous city with a smart planning that is sustainable for the future and resilient to come a change. We can foster healthy neighborhoods where everyone can access to green spaces, to support healthy habitat and recreation. I look forward to working with residents, the city council, city staff, and community and business leaders to collaborate and to bring this vision to reality. I cannot do this alone. And finally, I am grateful for everyone who helped me to be here today, my village, and all of you who came today to support me and to support this council. Thank you, gracias. This year, we celebrate 40 years as a city. We are a diverse and growing city with an incredible parks, infrastructure, farmland, diverse industry, great staff, and 31,000 neighbors. Let's celebrate our city together and move forward with our community. Thank you for all your support. Gracias por su apoyo, y estoy muy orgullosa de este nuevo rol de ser la alcaldesa de esta ciudad. Muchas gracias. (APPLAUSE). So continue with the agenda. Now we are moving to the election of the council president. So I am open the floor for nomination.
Mayor, I nominate Alder Gabriella Gerhart for council president.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, anyone else?
David, okay.
Mayor, I nominate Jay Allen for council president.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so now I will ask each of you to accept, if you are accepting this nomination. Are there any other ones, or no? No? Okay. So I will ask if you accept your nomination, and then...
Oh, yes, you.
Jay?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I'm going to close the floor for nomination, and then I'm going to give you the opportunity to each of you to speak on the qualification for council president. So who wants to be first?
Please go.
Okay.
Thanks so much. So I've been on the council for three years, and I've known many of you for at least two years. And I think you know that I love working on council. I find city processes and issues fascinating. And I'm running for council president because I want to work on expanding our knowledge of city issues so that we can make these tough decisions we face with more information and context. So Committee of the Whole meetings are the purview of the council president, and I would like to use these meetings to do training for us as a council that we can also use as valuable information for committees and commissions and also the public. Some issues I think we need to cover in more depth, and I have an exhaustive list, but I'll give you a few that I think are really important. I do think we need a session to help people understand what happens in a council meeting, you know, Robert's Rules, the structure of the agenda, what a consent agenda is, how on-base works so people can find the agendas, the core ordinances, how to find the city GIS map, all of those things that are like basics to understanding the city. I think we should have a session on that. I think we need to talk about referendums because we're going to be facing one in the very near future. We should discuss levy limits in more depth since that impacts our operating budget so much, and we haven't had a deep discussion about what that looks like. Utility fees and utilities in general, how they function differently from the rest of the budget. Planning and zoning is so essential. I think we need to talk a lot more about how the comprehensive plan should be implemented, how smart code works, and just like physically how to understand that, those planned department documents, that we can fully evaluate them. Tax increment district and TIF financing is going to be essential. I believe we may expand, make a creative new TIF this year, and so how our policies are distinct to make sure that all of us in the council really understand that. For public works, I think we need to understand why we choose to assess properties and like be able to explain those special assessments to the neighbors and what the rationale behind that is. Storm water management is really important, how we build our city to accommodate that, and how, you know, the differences between the urban service area and outside the urban service area, how native plantings and the environment impact it, how geology impacts it. I think road, road and intersection design, especially in terms of safety for pedestrians and bikers and for car drivers, is really important. We make these huge road decision projects. We made these decisions that can be hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars, and I think we need to learn more about that design process and that engineering process. I think we should do deep dives into these studies that we have coming up, the staffing plan, the sustainability plan, the teen center study, and the future intercity transit feasibility study, and not just hear about what the city says, but really talk about as a council how we implement these studies and really make, improve our city through that, through that discussion. I think we need topics that help us understand how we should expand the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative beyond the grant program and discuss what the health of a community looks like and what's public safety means in a holistic sense. I think housing and affordability, and really have a deep discussion about what we can actually do, what ordinances can we change, what money can we spend on the affordable housing fund in order to improve housing in the city and make it affordable for residents. And I think we need to engage more with commissions, the commissions that are working on ordinances, like the Tree Committee, you know, which we talked about recently, but also, you know, the RCC is working on dark sky ordinance, a street salting ordinance. We need to engage with those committees early on in the process so that they know how to navigate and bring those things to fruition. And then, so those are some ideas. I have a lot more, and I'd be open to more. I'd be open to more. But then I also think we should mix up how we do the meetings. I think we should always highlight a city document at the beginning of a meeting, all those plans that we should have a chance to discuss them as a council together and not just have them sitting as a PDF on the website. I think that we should consider hosting a Committee of the Whole meeting off-site once a year, make it a discussion and a listening session with residents, and maybe we move that around the city over the course of several years. And I think we should consider moving some discussions to the Genie Ceiling Room, which is a much smaller space and more roundabout council chamber so that we can have face-to-face discussions, because this, you know, this line, I think, does not always promote healthy or, not healthy discussions, but it doesn't, it doesn't let us look into each other's eyes, and I think that can make a difference in terms of having tough discussions. And I think when we discuss budget and CIP amendments, I really think we need to make the format of this discussion a little bit different and make sure that we can have back-and-forths with the amendment sponsor so that it's not just who raised their hand first, but it's really kind of creating a discussion about what the amendment looks like. And so those are some of the things. I think Committee of the Whole truly is such an amazing vehicle that we have to have these big discussions and these big picture and these training for Alders and for the public about what we do. I'm truly passionate about this work, and I think under my leadership, we can be better prepared to make decisions on these tough issues that we face. And I believe I have demonstrated that I am patient, kind, curious, and open to discussion in my interactions on council, and I would take the same approach as president of the council. And I also think it would be meaningful to have a woman council president to serve with our first woman mayor in 30 years. So, I ask for your vote. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Gabriella. Next, Jay.
Yeah, Gabriella brought up a lot of really good points, and some of them are things that she and I have talked about, and they are things that I think I want to pursue also. I've served on the council previously when we actually did have council meetings in other places besides this building. And I think that's something that we need to do, especially when we've introduced a new neighborhood into the city just a couple of months ago, and many of the residents of that neighborhood are not aware of what the Pittsburgh government does. So I think as a way of introducing ourselves to them, we should be moving some more of our meetings outside of this location, which is hard to get to if you don't happen to have a car. And I do think there are a lot of things that the Committee of the Whole should be doing that it's not doing right now, and mainly it's just because the history of it has gotten rather soft. We are going to have to talk seriously about a referendum this year to, that's going to involve raising taxes, and that's a hard topic. And we will need to have a lot of discussions about that among this group before we present something to the voters. But we're reaching a point now where our current, our current budget process is unsustainable. Within two years, we probably aren't going to be able to even give the existing staff the pay raises that they deserve for the work that they do. So we need to do some things that are important, that are coming up, and I hope that we will do those things. So I asked for your vote. I held this position once before, many years ago. I thought we did some good things as a council, and I look forward to seeing how this turns out and what our next year will be like.
Thank you. So now we are going to proceed with the vote. So it's going to be a secret vote, and how you're going to do it, Tracy?
Yep, you should each have a piece of paper in front of you if you want to write down who you're voting for, and I will collect those shortly and tally the votes. Jay Allen is the council president.
Okay, so we have a new council president. Congratulations, Jay. So now, Jay, you need to recommend your standing committee appointments. Do you have your...
I do.
Okay.
Please pass those down that way. You can keep one. I made 12 of them. So the, my recommendation for standing committees is on Finance Committee, Randy Udell as chair, Jim Wheeler and Gabriella Gerhart serving on that committee also. On Public Safety and Human Services, Dave Herbst as chair, myself and Shannon as the other members. And on the Personnel Committee, Gabriella as chair, and Joe and Bill also serving. Basically, I didn't feel like we needed to jumble up everything and make a lot of wholesale changes to these committees, so this should be, this should be a pretty stable appointment for everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. So next in the agenda is the mayoral appointment for council members to committees and commission.
We will need to vote on that before...
Oh, we need to vote?
Before we move on. Oh, yes.
We need to vote. Okay, so I move a motion to approve the...
I'll make the motion to approve the appointments.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Nay. The motion carries. So next in the agenda is the mayoral appointment for council members to committees and commission. So I already sent you last night an email to all of you with your commissions and committees. For public record, I want to appoint Alder Herbst to Parks, and he's going to be the mayor designated for Chair of Public Works. Alder Maldonado will be in SIDA and BI Committee. Alder Bill Jetzer to Public Works, TCC and Housing. Alder Gerhart will be in Plan Commission and RCC. Alder Allen will be in Healthy Neighborhood Initiative and Agent Well. Alder Shannon Strassmann will be in the Tree Committee and Land, Mark, and Preservation Committee. Alder Wheeler will be in EMS and the Laboratory Board. And Alder Randy Udell will be in SIDA and Rural Affairs. So, next in our agenda is resolution, we need, I need approval of resolution R-86-23 designating the official newspaper of the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So what is the official newspaper, Tracy?
So this is something that we approve every year, designating the official newspaper as the posting locations.
Yeah.
It's the Wisconsin...
Oh, I'm here.
The Wisconsin State Journal.
Yep, it's in the reservation.
Okay.
I was one ahead, sorry.
Yeah.
Any question? All those in favor of resolution R-86-23 say aye. Nay. The motion carries. Next is approval of resolution R-87-23 designating official posting location.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Ms. Mayor?
Yeah.
We're a city of about 35 square miles. What's the rationale behind each of the physical posting locations being a two-minute walk from where we are right now?
The one is a question for...
Jay has his hand up. Yeah. Bill, you've stumbled into something that irritates me beyond belief, and that is that that we have chosen this spot as our quote-unquote "city campus, city center," whatever we want to call it. It's not really accessible through transit. A large section of the population of this city cannot get here, and it is, it's been a decision that started back in 1996 when the site for this building that you and I are sitting in was selected. And I, at the time, there were only two of us who opposed this particular location. Then we built the library on this location, and we keep, now we're proposing to build a police facility on this location, and it's, we just keep compounding bad decisions with bad decisions. So I agree with you. As I was looking over this list, it made no sense to me that we are not, that we haven't added a posting location in Southdale where, where the town of Madison has been posting meetings for years. We don't have a posting location at either of the, at any, any of the other fire stations, and there's certainly no location in the northern part of the city up near Post Road area. So I, I think these are things that we as a council need to think about as we start thinking about building big buildings in different locations of the city or continuing to build them here. At this juncture, I don't know that we have any other viable locations for posting. I don't know that either of the fire stations have a place to actually post things, but these are, these are things we need to think about. I would be happy if we can get answers to those questions, to come back and revisit this resolution next month and see about posting them in these other places.
Any other question?
So, does the, does the place have to be like a city-owned facility in order for it to be a posting place?
I think it would need to be publicly accessible. City staff will likely need to go and physically make the posting wherever they are located. I don't know as to we'd be able to rely on emailing them, for instance, to, you know, a keeper of our, a maintenance person of a facility. So I think we'd want to keep that in mind as far as, you know, where we might select other posting locations to ensure that, you know, the intent of the council, i.e. to have these postings accessible in other portions of our community, is truly being met by having them in publicly accessible places. So I think it may take some time for, if you want staff to take a look at perhaps offering some additional ideas that the council can consider. We can certainly do that.
Any other question?
Yeah, just, I mean, jumping off of that, if we're talking about places where things can be posted that are in different places in the city, maybe a, just knowledge of what places the city owns and can get into would be good for that next discussion.
Yeah, we'll look to compile that, and we can share that with council.
Okay.
If, if we decide to put these up in our city parks, then it doesn't take a whole
lot of extra effort to have our, our park staff distribute them as they make their way out to the parks during the normal course of their business.
Well, again, I think this would be a topic for further consideration so we can assess the suitable locations within a park.
I don't know if we'd be able to rely on emailing them, for instance, to, you know, a keeper of our... A maintenance person of a facility. So I think we'd want to keep that in mind as far as, you know, where we might select other posting locations to ensure that, you know, the intent of the council, i.e. to have these postings accessible in other portions of our community is truly being met by having them in publicly accessible places. So I think it may take some time for a few on-staff to take a look at perhaps offering some additional ideas that the council can consider. We can certainly do that.
Any other question?
Yeah, just, I mean, jumping off of that, if we're talking about places where things can be posted that are in different places in the city, maybe just knowledge of what places the city owns and can get into would be good for that next discussion.
Yeah, we'll look to compile that, and we can share that with council.
Okay.
If we decide to put these up in our city parks, then it doesn't take a whole lot of extra effort to have our park staff distribute them as they make their way out to the parks during the normal course of their business?
Well, again, I think this would be a topic for further consideration so we can assess the suitable locations within a park. How many parks would we be posting them in? Do we have a spot within the park that's sheltered, so to speak, so that whatever posting is available to be seen versus potentially removed or subject to weather conditions like rain? And we'd have to obviously talk with our parks operations staff to see how they might potentially do that within their day-to-day duties or other staff, for that matter.
Any other question? No? You want to speak?
Yeah. A further consideration on that is the size of the posting area because sometimes our agendas are, you know, six, eight... I think the longest agenda I've seen in this term is eight pages. But eight pages takes up a significant amount of space. So you have to, you know, unless you're going to put 100 copies out there for people to take one, you'd have to have something where the entire thing can be displayed. And obviously, that's not going to have everything on it because, like, you know, some of our agendas, especially if there's a lot of Plan Commission activity, we can have a 600-page agenda packet. So there's a lot of considerations about this. But the... I think the idea that you brought up and the idea that I'm trying to press on is that the city consists of more than just the half-mile or the mile around this building. But sometimes, when we make long-term decisions, we think that this is all there is. And I think we need to be thinking in the bigger picture for the rest of the city.
Okay, so are we ready to vote? All of the favors in resolution R-87-23, say aye.
Aye.
Next, the motion carries. So next in our agenda is announcement. Our next common council meeting is going to be April 25, 7:30. And our next Committee of the Whole meeting is going to be April 26, 2023. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, the motion carries. So we are adjourning at 6:06. Thank you very much.